Call the need to order.
Mrs. Kropaski? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood? Mrs. Smrek?
Item number four. For department reports. This is Sandy Thorndike.
I always think I'm 12 feet tall. I'm not. Tonight, I'm going to do something a little bit different. I have kind of an odd educational philosophy. We prepare our kids for two things in this world. We prepare them academically, and we want them to grow in skills from the time they're little itty-bitties until they're past us and go to college or wherever they go. But we also need to prepare them for life. We have to give them the advocacy skills and the independent skills that they're going to need to be functioning grown-ups in the world. And I have 25 years' worth of former students that I really feel that we've accomplished that. But this year, we've done something. I didn't have anything to do with it. But we have done something that is absolutely amazing in my book. And I want to call Melina John and her mom Lisa up here for a minute, and I'm going to talk about them, and then Lisa, then Melina and I are going to have a conversation. Melina is a ninth grader at Austintown-Fitch High School. She is a student with a learning disability. She's been with us since she was little. She went to ACLD for a couple of years, which is a school for children who learn a little differently. And through that connection, she got to know somebody named Courtney Cruz. Courtney is currently a doctoral student at Kent State University. And she invited Melina and her mom, and another couple, a mom named Melissa Walker and her son Paul, to speak with her at the Oktelathon Conference in Columbus in November. So Melina and her mom, and the other set of mom and son, were part of a panel discussion at a workshop for educators in Columbus in November. The topic of their workshop was called, "A Working Triad Partnership: Teacher-Parent-Student." Now, how many times have we said that as educators? That we need the teacher, we need the parent, and we need the student. And they went and they talked about why that is important, why it's important for the parent to be part of it, why it's important for the student to be part of it, and why it's important for the teacher to be part of it. So Melina and I met yesterday, and we had a little bit of a conversation. And she and I are going to replay it. I'm going to ask her the questions I asked her yesterday for her to answer in front of you, so you can see how she feels about her parent-teacher-student partnership. And then I'm also going to ask Lisa if she has anything that she would like to share about her situation with the parent-teacher-student partnership. So, I have questions right now. Okay, Melina, I'm going to let you step up. If you need to make it higher, that's okay. My teacher voice, I don't even need it. I know your parent partner is your mom. I know that. Who are your teacher partners? Or who were your teacher partners coming up through all of these years in school?
Well, so far, it has to be Ms. Noble. She currently is a teacher at Fitch right now. And Courtney Cruz. She helped me when I was little.
Yeah, so you've had teacher partners all the way along.
Yes.
What are some of the supports that you use in the classroom to help you be independent? What do you do? What do you use to help you be independent in the classroom?
To just know that it's all going to come out to be to a good end for where I want to be in the future.
Do you use anything to help you when you write or when you read?
Definitely CoWriter.
Okay. How do you use that?
That is a computer app that you could download on the computer, and it gives you options of words.
Okay, it predicts words, doesn't it?
Yes.
For those of you who don't know what that is, CoWriter is a program that's available to every student in Austintown, whether they have a disability or not. And it helps them by predicting the words they're trying to type, and then it allows them to listen to them so they can pick which one they want. How do you use that? Not on an English paper. Like, how would you use that in social studies class?
Well, my teacher, they would download it because they know my problems that I have with reading and writing. So they would make a copy and use it on the computer and just open it.
So you could then read what you want, type your answers, get some words predicted for you to help you do that.
Yes.
Now, who tells those teachers you need that? Is it you that tells them? Or is it the teacher partner first, and then you follow it up with, "Yeah, I really need it"? How are you doing that?
Well, depending on how bad I'm reading it, I will usually tell the teacher. And then they would make a copy.
So you're advocating for yourself?
Mostly.
Mostly. Did you do that in middle school? No. And you're doing it now because of teachers who have helped you see that you can do that, right? How about in writing? When you're writing essays for... You have Mrs. Weiss and Mrs. Noble. How do you use it to write for them? Because I know they have you guys writing all the time.
Well, usually, like I said, you would use it on the computer and just kind of open there.
And so you use it to edit? And you use it to do words? Snap and Read is the other program we have. And I know that you use that, and I know that you use Google Read and Write, because that's also on the computer. Do you use Snap and Read for things that are difficult, like your science and social studies stuff?
Yes, definitely.
Do you use Bookshare?
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that. Bookshare is also a program we have that's available to any student with a reading disability where all of the books they need to read can be downloaded, even the textbooks. The American History book is on there. And I think the Biology book is too. Okay. What do you think about the teacher-student-parent partnership around here?
Well, I definitely feel that it's important to have a teacher-parent-student relationship, absolutely. It just makes everything so much smoother. You know, I want to thank the administration for promoting Mrs. Thorndike too, the director of Special Ed. She is an amazing person. She has been at my side for a long time. It's nice to see somebody that's so positive all the time. I just want to thank you guys because she's amazing. But yeah, I mean, without a teacher-student-parent relationship, you fail. I mean, there's no other answer. You fail. If you don't have the support that you need, and you don't have people that back you and listen to you and empathize with you. I mean, there's nothing... I can't even explain the feeling of going into a special education meeting with your child who needs help and not getting it, and then not having the support of somebody listening to you who want to help you. So if you don't have that, you fail.
So you feel now that you're getting that support from the teachers and everything else?
Absolutely.
Well, you have one other piece of support that came who is still in Florida. Those flowers are from you, for you, one for each, from Ms. Gannett, who is still in Florida with her family. This is from me, the case for coming. But I just want to give a round of applause to Melina for going and speaking in front of that group. I have one more little piece I want to share. Don't forget your flowers, ladies. I talked about CoWriter and Snap and Read. And I pulled up the statistics. We've been using CoWriter since 2014, 2015. So far, the students of Austintown have typed 780,000 words using CoWriter that amounts to 6,890 days. Melina has typed 10,000 of those words herself since she came back in eighth grade for a total of about 103 days using CoWriter. Snap and Read were still growing. We're trying to get there. But we have read in the district 37 million words in Snap and Read. I want that to be twice that much because we really need it. Most of it, 1,836 days. Melina only had 59,000 words in Snap and Read, but she also uses Google Read and Write. I can't track that. So I know this isn't a whole lot of statistics about different things going on in Special Ed, but to me, this is powerful. To me, having a student who is so positive about her education with us and is willing to go and speak in front of a group of educators in Columbus says more for what we're doing in Austintown than any statistic I can come up with. So thank you, Melina and Lisa.
Mr. Ventresco?
I don't know if you heard me. I said, "I don't know if I could top that."
You won't.
I'm going on script. I think that was off-script. Good news for Mrs. Smrek. We anonymously decided that you'll take Dr. Ritchie's duty of keeping me on time. So like when I start to... Yep, yep, yep. Hi, I'm Tom Ventresco. I'm the technology coordinator for the district. And Mr. Sherwood teases me sometimes. You know, part of my day is putting out fires. The front end of the school year has been a lot of small fires. Things that are containable. I think you're going to hear what you just heard from Mrs. Thorndike. A lot of gear in the district, a lot of use. We're on our second or third round of some of this stuff. One of the big things that I do that I feel is very important is... Pardon me. Is Progress Book. And I tease some of our staff members. I'm 100%. There's no one I can't get into Progress Book, okay? So if you have trouble getting into Progress Book, get ahold of me. I will get you in there, especially grades six through 12, students and parents. I'm sure it doesn't come to anyone as a surprise, our six-to-12 Chromebook projects moving forward. In the state of Ohio, about 85% of school districts use Chromebooks as their testing platform for OSTs. More and more every day are going to one-to-one. So like I said, we're moving through our second generation of some of this stuff or our third generation. This summer, we replaced the whole Gen 1 fleet, which were the original ones that we bought in 2014. So AMS started their school year with brand-new Gen 5s, and they're pretty nice. At Fitch, I was... I had the privilege of working with Mrs. Caruso, who I'm sure you know this. She administers the ACT in Austintown. So she... All the test administrators kind of fall underneath her for the ACT. What did we do this year for the ACT? We administered it online via Chromebook. No one's done that yet. It was okay. It went off here without a hitch. I'm not sure I know what the advantage of it is. It was... But as far as the gear go, it worked. So more and more testing platforms are going to Chromebooks and testing online. If that's good or not, I don't know that, but it worked. Oh, big thing is grades K to 12, all the staff members have Chromebooks. We moved Chromebooks for teaching staff to AES and AIS right as Christmas winter break occurred. So that's all going forward. If you're in the IT industry, security is a pain, but it's just a... It's out there now, especially nowadays. Things have ramped up here for some reason for Austintown. Access student accounts have been under attack since the spring. And I thought, nothing I do that's special here, why they missed us? I just thought, okay, skip the As for some reason. And that's changed. There's a post on Falcon Nation that if you're from the graduating class of 2019, you should go read my post, okay? Your accounts of... Your accounts... Your student accounts for Google have been disabled and expired. That doesn't mean that they can't be reactivated, okay? The general rule has been, a graduating class, I leave their stuff open for a year. Why? They need it. There's stuff that they left there after they graduated, and they want it when they're in college. It hasn't really been a big problem for me. What's happened now is many of these accounts are getting compromised, and they're getting used to send out spam and all this stuff. So Google kind of crushes that. So we had to close down all of those accounts. I've already opened a couple dozen of them back up for active students that are in college. They need their stuff. They're fantastic. They understand. I explain to them just what I'm explaining to them. Like, yeah, give me 30 days. I'll get everything out of there, and it's working very well. That post is on Falcon Nation. We don't just throw things in the dumpster when it comes to electronics here. We had another summer of recycling. If anybody needs to see our recycling certificates, they're in my email. We're on the edge of a Zero34 project, right? I have some money put away for to start replacing some of the gear that comes with AES and AIS. Some of it's starting to show its age. So that stuff is going to start to get replaced. That starts to take a little more shape. I'll give you more details. Pardon me. It's our 21st year of participating in the federal E-Rate program. It's underway, so that's always joy. And then finally, I wanted to give a thank you to Mr. Suavel, who talked me into advising the Technology Club for Fitch High School, which meets Tuesdays and Thursdays and 2:20 at Fitch after school. They had not had an advisor for a couple of years. I'm like, "I'll do it. Let's do it." Oh, I love it. So they're so fun. We were meeting once a week, and then Eli convinced me that he thinks we should meet twice a week. So we meet twice a week at Fitch. We're tearing things apart. They need to get a little focused on what they want to do. So that's kind of the stage that we're in right now is, technology is such a broad topic. What do you want to do? So I'm having a lot of fun with them. But I want to thank Mr. Suavel for that because that's been the highlight of my school year so far.
Thanks, Tom. On to item number five, building reports. Mr. Race from Fitch High School.
Here's our Fitch High School news and notes for January. We welcomed back our staff and students last week. It was wonderful to have such a long break. Everybody came back really refreshed, ready to go, really energized. It was great to hear what our staff had been up to over the time off and our students as well. So that was exciting. Next week, our first semester will come to an end. A lot of our seniors seem to be becoming Bon Jovi fans because we're halfway there already. And all of the senior activities, graduation, senior banquet and everything will start to pop up much sooner, I think, than anybody's expecting. Tomorrow, very exciting at Fitch. We have a representative from the junior ROTC is coming all the way from the state of Alabama to tour the building. We're looking at starting a junior ROTC program, if not next year, sometime in the near future. And this is one of the formalities they go through. They do a site visit. You have to have a variety of conditions to meet. And we'll be learning more about that tomorrow. And of course, we'll be keeping everybody informed about where we're at with that project. Speaking of projects, we submitted a bid last year to host the 2021 State Speech and Debate Tournament. That bid was approved. So in March next year, we will be bringing hundreds of students, coaches, and judges from all around Ohio to campus, not just at Fitch. They'll be using, I'm sure, the middle school, probably the intermediate school as well. So big event, really great way to showcase everything we have here, our facilities. We're looking forward to that, too. Our sports are continuing this winter. We have basketball, swimming, bowling, and wrestling ongoing. Our Quiz Bowl team as well started their season last week. They're 1-1 so far. We're expecting some great things from them this year. And then things upcoming. Tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, we have the Creative Arts Night. Saturday, January 25th, is the band Jazz and Dessert. Our sophomores, who are considering the Career Center, will be traveling out there at the end of the month, take a tour of the facilities, see if that's really a route they want to go. We have a PTSA Winter Dance on February 1st, a Veterans Spaghetti Dinner on February 4th. And also in February, we have the statewide ACT, which will be given to all of our juniors as well. So we're continuing to move ahead as we get into the winter months. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Mr. Daltorio from Middle School?
Good evening, everyone. Highlights and updates from the middle school. Tomorrow is our final red-and-blue basketball game. The boys and girls will play against each other. This is a very special event. I enjoy it very much. This year's eighth-grade class is especially talented. So if you are free, it's a great thing to watch. Our second quarter is coming to an end. Grades will be in. And at the middle school, we showcase our students' academic achievements with our assemblies, where students will receive high honor, honor roll, honorable mention, perfect attendance awards for the quarter, as well as bug awards, where any student who brought up their grades can earn that award. And then the second half of those banquets, or the second half of those assemblies are a spirit award where they compete against houses. You can see the colors of the T-shirts back here. They sit with their houses and cheer on their specific house color for a spirit award. And those are very fun. We are happy to welcome Ms. Lori Garland to our secretary position after wishing our previous secretary of 30 years, Mrs. Cheryl Gennaro, a happy retirement. So we're happy to have her. Coming up, we've got our talent show. PT... The PTA puts it on. It's a great spectacle. That'll be in March, but they are having... It is a spectacle. It's a great... They are having rehearsals, getting ready for that. And so it's exciting. There's a buzz going around about our talent show. We have a couple speakers coming in to AMS to inspire some of our students. Coach Tim Brown, a motivational speaker. Mrs. Vickers was able to land. Will be coming February 7th to talk to the school about making good choices in finding motivation in school and in life. And an author, Matthew De La Peña, who is a Newberry Medal winner, as well as an NCTE Intellectual Freedom Award winner. He's written over seven young adult novels. He'll be in to talk about the students and about the career of an author. So those are AMS updates. Thank you.
Mr. Papagallo from the Intermediate School?
On behalf of the AIS family, I want to wish the board a Happy New Year. It's been a great start so far, and we're really enjoying it. We have a few things going on. We just finished up our map, our iReady math testing this past week. Yesterday, we had an assembly for our students, NED. It's for Positive Mindset. It's an acronym for Never Give Up, Encourage Others, and Always Do Your Best. It was a pretty powerful message, and the students thoroughly enjoyed it. We have homeroom photos coming up next week. World Read Aloud Day is coming up on January 31st, so we'll be contacting some of you to come out. And hopefully, you have some time with your busy schedules to come read to our students. It's a pretty fun day. We have a couple field trips coming up in February. The fifth graders, we're going to be going down to Powers Auditorium for a YSU Dance Theater of Harlem. And we have the Phantoms hockey game, which we've been going to the last couple of years. The third and fourth graders will be going to that. So we're looking forward to that. And want to give a shout-out to Alicia Burnfield and Scott Doan. Alicia is our lead math teacher. She's been staying after with Club Invention, staying with kids after school, where they do experiments and make inventions. It's pretty neat. Scott Doan started up a fifth-grade student council where they're helping out throughout the building and doing different areas of leadership and passing out positive notes. It's pretty good. Want to give a shout-out to Tom Ventresco and Monica Pollan. They've been working very, very hard with the Chromebooks, and there are a lot of behind-the-scenes and the amount of work they put in. We're very thankful for them, and the staff is very appreciative to you, Tom. And Nancy Bellada, this past... She works in our library and cafeteria. This past summer, she was diagnosed with stomach cancer. She comes to work every day, chin held high, and you would never know it. She stays positive, and she does an incredible job. And I just wanted to recognize her at that time. That's our report for AIS. Thank you.
Kathy Dorvish with our elementary update.
Good evening, everyone. These are the happenings at AES. Academics, we too just completed the second iReady diagnostic. We did reading before break and math after. The teachers have just adjusted instructional groups, and we'll be monitoring their intervention. January and February, AES is going to be holding our first annual Parent-Student-Family Day for math and reading. Parents are invited to come to school to participate in a lesson during the school day with their student. In February, we are going to have two service projects going on at AES. Students are going to be sending Valentines to veteran major Bill White from California. Major White is 104 years old and a retired WWII vet. We were asked by our local VFW to participate. And we're also going to be coloring Valentines for the Ohio Department of Aging. These Valentines are going to be distributed to our local nursing homes. Finally, a shout-out to Mrs. Pazulo, who is a kindergarten teacher at AES. She received the first 2020 Duncan Class Act Award, and she was on the news this morning with the kids. So it was very exciting. Thank you.
Item number six. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the agenda for the January 15th, 2020, Board of Education Regular January Session.
Mrs. Mock? Mrs. Kropaski? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood? Mrs. Smrek?
For number seven, we have nobody signed up for the public comment section of the agenda. Item eight. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the following items, A through J, by consent action.
Mrs. Kropaski? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Item nine. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the master agreement between Side Effects Incorporated and the Austintown Local School District to deliver to the district advertising revenue.
Mrs. Smrek? Mrs. Kropaski? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ten. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve Teresa Emmerling Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve Teresa Emmerling for continued fiscal support through the Mahoning Valley COG until June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Sherwood? Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mrs. Smrek?
Item eleven. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following personnel items, 1 through 3, by consent action.
Mrs. Mock? Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Twelve. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the MOU between OPSY Local 194 and the Austintown Board of Education with regard to the operation of the federally funded Summer Food Service Program regarding posting, selection and compensation of food service personnel. This MOU is effective May 20, May 2020 through August 2020, and will be reassessed for need every year.
Mrs. Kropasky? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mrs. Smrek?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the clinical affiliation agreement with Stark State College, whereas Stark State College of North Canton, Ohio has established an associate degree of dietetic technician program, and whereas the Austintown Local School District has the facilities and resources to provide the instructional phase necessary to the program. Therefore, in consideration of the respective covenants, promises, conditions and terms to be performed by each set forth in the agreement, the parties acknowledge it would be to their mutual benefit and to the benefit of the community to promote, develop and maximize utilization of community resources.
Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood? Mrs. Smrek?
Fourteen. Upon the recommendation to direct the superintendent to notify the Ohio Department of Education that the Austintown Local School District will again be an open enrollment district in the 2020-21 school year.
Mrs. Mock? Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mrs. Smrek?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the MOU by and between Kent State University and the Austintown Local School District to participate in the College Credit Plus Program, CCP, with Kent State University to provide the multiple opportunities for secondary school students in grades 7 through 12, who are Ohio residents, to enroll in college-level courses on a full or part-time basis in complete allowable academic, non-sectarian, non-remedial courses for high school and college credit pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 336502. This agreement is in effect for the 2020-21 academic year.
Mrs. Kropasky? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Sixteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2020-21 school year as required by the OHSAA's Constitution.
Mrs. Mock? Mrs. Smrek? Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve a building use permit for Mahoning Valley Skywarn to use the Fitch Auditorium for the purpose of tornado spotting training with a meteorologist from the Cleveland National Weather Service at a date and time to be determined during the month of March or April 2020. Building use fees will be waived for this community service training.
Mrs. Kropasky? Mrs. Smrek? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Eighteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the readoption of the required board policy IJA career advising.
Mrs. Kropasky? Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mrs. Smrek?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the service agreement between the Mahoning Valley Regional Council Government and the Austintown Local School District, whereas the Mahoning Valley COG shall provide career counselor to the school two days per week during the 2019-20 school year.
Mrs. Mock? Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mrs. Smrek?
Make a motion to add item 20 to approve February 20th, the 3rd Thursday, moving forward for board meetings.
Mrs. Kropasky? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood? Mrs. Smrek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, a couple things. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to sincerely thank the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 2 of Austintown, for the five flags that they donated and raised up around the campus. So we want to thank them on behalf of their kind gesture to us. And then also, as everyone knows, January is Board Recognition Month, and if you've never been a board member, you don't really understand what it is to serve the community, serve the kids, and making sure that you have always the kids' interest at your heart. And there's no doubt that Kim coming on now has replaced Doc, and five of the finest board members that I've been around in my 31 years, so I just want to take this time and have you join me to recognize the Austintown Board of Education, and give you a little bit of how long they've been here. So first, Kim, just let you know, the state does not give you a certificate yet, because you just came on, so I just want to make sure you know that. Starting with our board president, Don Sherwood, he's been on the board since 2018, and thank you, sir, for everything you do. Thank you. And the vice president, Robin Kropasky, has been on the board since 2018 as well. Thank you so much, Robin. Next, board member Harold Porter. Harold, you've been on the board since 2012, second election, so congratulations on that, and thank you for what you do. And then the longest-serving board member so far, since 2010, right? 2010. Board member Kathy Mock. Thank you so much, Kathy. Again, thank you, board, and thank you for all you do for Austintown community, and also the kids as well.
I just want to wish Kim, or to the board, it's gonna be fun, I promise.
Welcome, welcome to the board. A lot of time together, but we welcome you here, and I think, just a quick side comment, it's a new year, we've got a really, in my opinion, and the board's opinion, I'm sure, a really good leadership team in this district. That means buildings, departments, running the district, a lot has happened in the last year. We've got a really good team in place in a lot of places, and I'm looking forward to the rest of this year and beyond.
Harold, I want to congratulate you on your reelection to the board, and Kim, I want to welcome you as a new board member. And I just want to echo what Don said, too, I think we have a very strong team in place, and I look forward to working together, which, with an approach of professionalism and transparency, and it's going to be a great 2020 moving forward. Happy New Year, everyone.
I just want to thank everybody for welcoming me, and I really want to say, Melina, I'm so proud of you. You did so awesome, and you've come so far with the help of your mom, just, I'm really proud of you. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
I'd like to welcome Kim, welcome aboard the Austintown Board of Education, and excited to be here and glad to work with you guys in another year in 2020. Thank you. Mrs. Mock? Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood? Mrs. Smrek?